I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could you please remain standing for a moment of silence for the following people? Robert Parsons, father of retired art teacher Marilyn McDonald; Artie Paparazzo, husband of retired CHS teacher Denise Paparazzo; and Stacy McNally, a Clinton High School graduate in 2005. Thank you. Welcome to the July 11 school committee meeting. This is our reorganization meeting. So the first order of business is to congratulate our newest school committee member and welcome Michael McIntyre to the board.
Thank you.
With that, we need to reorganize this committee. So I will entertain motions for the this coming year's chairmanship of the Clinton School Committee. Are there any nominations?
Superintendent, I nominate Board Member Robert Epstein for chairman.
All right. Mr. Mendoza nominates Mr. Epstein as chairman for this coming year. Is there a second to that?
A second.
Second, thank you. Are there any other nominations for chairman of the Clinton School Committee for this coming year? If not, I would entertain a motion to close nominations at this time.
So move, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you. Is there a second to close nominations?
Second.
Thank you, Michael. All in favor of closing nominations at this time signify by raising your hand.
Right.
Thank you. Opposed? That's unanimous. Now it's time to officially vote, I guess. So Mr. Epstein's name has been put in nomination as the chairman for the 2000, where are we?
Sixteen, seventeen.
Sixteen, seventeen school year. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. And any opposed? No. Congratulations, Mr. Epstein.
Thank you very much.
For another year. And it's time for the vice chair.
Thank you for that vote of confidence. I would ask for a nomination for vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Mr. Bates for vice chair.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Since we're a pretty short staff here, I suspect we could probably close, make a motion to close those nominations. Second. Okay. That's been made and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Bates. Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
To both of you. Mr. Epstein, it's all yours.
Thank you. So we get a motion to approve the bills?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
And also a motion to approve the minutes of the June 13 meeting.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a second?
Yes.
And seconded. Are there any comments or corrections to be made to the minutes? I take it Mary did another perfect job.
As she always does.
Yes. Got a vote to approve? Thank you. That's unanimous. I suppose we don't really have, I don't know, does the PTA, all of us?
No, but the CPAC does.
Okay. We don't have a student rep, of course. We have no student rep.
No.
Student rep, right? Why not?
So our CPAC is hosting a paint night on August 2nd at the Polish American Veterans Club at 6:30. We will be painting the Tree of Life. And all the proceeds that we make that night, we're hoping to put towards a scholarship for a graduating senior this coming year, along the lines as PTA, where it would be under our discretion. We still need to just talk specifics, but that they would be able to use the money towards anything. And we'd like to put it towards a student that has an IEP that might be going to a community college. And if we can raise more money during the year, we'll do more than one scholarship. But for right now, our goal is to at least get one scholarship.
That's great.
And, you know, be able to, you know, do that for a senior graduate.
And what night is that going to be?
It's a Tuesday night. It's August 2nd.
What time again, I'm sorry?
6:30. I will be posting it everywhere. And I might even ask Mr. Ngano to send it through staff email.
We can do that.
So, because we can have up to 30 people. So we would be making $300 off of that, so we could put that towards the scholarship. And we're hoping to do another night in October at the DIY studio in town, too. But we're not sure exactly what we're going to do yet.
Awesome. I apologize in advance, I'm going to be up in the White Mountains hiking. Sounds like a really nice, sounds like a really-
That sounds really good, too.
Sounds like a really nice effort, and that'd be a great thing.
Yeah, so we've been wanting to do something like this for a while, and we're really happy that we're finally getting it underway.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. CTA, do we have anything this evening?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, thank you. Well, we have a big action item tonight. And before I turn it over to Terry, who has given us his notice of retiring, which I don't know why we would let him do that, but it says at that time, "I will have served 43 years as an educator in the Clinton Public Schools," eight of them as your superintendent. I- Huh? That's a long time. Mr. Kuchar could probably correct me, but in the Jewish faith, the gift of knowledge is considered a good deed. And I remember when Pat Burke retired, and I was scared to death to get up and speak in front of the whole Elks Lodge, which I didn't realize I had to do, but he also had spent many, many years as an educator. And I think that it's truly a mitzvah to, a good deed, to give knowledge, and over such a long course. And if you think about how many people a teacher ends up touching, we got some great speeches at the graduation this year when some of the students got up and said, "I wouldn't be here for, if it wasn't for, this teacher or that teacher, that guidance counselor, what have you." So I congratulate you on doing that good deed and for all those years, and still smiling.
Trying.
And, you know, I'm sure that's, it's got to be hard to walk away, but I want to thank you for all that service and-
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
I'm going to read it. Well, I'm not going to read it. I'll summarize it for you.
I just cut him off. He was supposed to be reading.
Yes, I was supposed to do that. Anyway, yes, the letter is to notify the school committee that I'll be retiring July 28th, but of next year, 2017. And I just want to make sure everyone understands this. I'm not looking for a, you know, a farewell concert or anything like that. The reason for this is threefold, actually, all right? Number one, the last transition wasn't easy when I took over. I had about maybe three days with Mr. Gaw to work out what I was supposed to do. And I really don't want that to happen to the next person. So I'm giving the school committee really an entire year to decide what to do and how to do it, and to find someone appropriate, and I'm sure they will be able to do that. And part of that process is perhaps working with the MAS-C, and that's why Glenn Kuchar is here tonight. So that's one of the reasons for the definitely overboard on the notice, all right? The other one is, as Robert said, next July I turn 65. It'll be 43 years and eight years as a superintendent. That's longer than anybody since Brendan Bailey, and they don't make them like Brendan Bailey anymore, that's for sure. And the reason for the July 28th is the fact that, because I'm also the grant writer, the federal grants all come in in early July. And I think it would be best if I either wrote them or helped the new person to write them, rather than to have someone come in July 1st, and the first thing they're going to have to do is write probably three federal grants amounting to maybe half a million dollars or something, especially if they're not a grant writer. So that would give us probably four weeks to work together. We could work on the grants together, get him or her set up for the following year, and I can head off into the sunset. The only other thing I mentioned in the letter was that I just really hope that the person who replaces me is a true educator, somebody, you know, with teaching experience. I see a trend with a lot of new people getting involved in the superintendency, a lot of young people. And although that's great for youth and enthusiasm and energy and all those great things, when you see it, it usually means, you know, that person doesn't have the classroom experience. I know I was a real, real late bloomer, believe me. So I got into this when I was 53, and I wouldn't suggest that for any, to anyone. But it also meant I had 30 years in the classroom. And I think the next superintendent has got to know what goes on in a classroom. They have to know what teachers are feeling and thinking, and, you know, they have to know enough about instruction and real education, because that's where the rubber meets the rubber. So I thank you for the opportunity. We've got a long way to go. I promise I won't be looking for Dr. Feelgood to tell everybody I'm stressed out and I have to leave at Christmas or something like that. Hope I take my regular vacation in February and one in late June. But other than that, I will be here to the bitter end, I promise. And hopefully, working harder, harder than usual, maybe, because they got to get some things done.
Bill, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
We need a motion to accept his resignation. Now, I guess we just have to- Do we need a motion?
I don't think we do.
We can't tie him up either way. He met his contract obligation by the letter.
It's like not accepting a maternity leave.
I know.
What the hell are you going to do there? You know, it's kind of-
We'll think of something.
Shall we go right to Glenn Kuchar?
I'm sure he's anxious to make his presentation.
Yes, he is. Glenn Kuchar, of course, is representing your organization, the MAS-C, Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Tonight, he's going to talk about the options available to school committees as far as in looking for a superintendent. And he also is going to cover a little bit on just being a school committee member, the rules, the responsibilities of your role, which I know you all know, but I think your review is probably in good order anyway. So Glenn, appreciate it.
Thank you. You have a number of options available to you. You don't have to accept the superintendent's retirement.
Is that a viable option?
Giving him the daytime TV is terrible speech, so he understands that. But you do have the advantage-
Glenn, you want these, you want these given on?
Oh, sure, yes, thank you. You do have the advantage of having a superintendent who will be here for more than a year, who can facilitate a transition, and who, if you wish, can participate in the process of succession. In addition, you probably have a superintendent who will be available to the next superintendent as needed. Your authority as a school committee is quite easy to explain. Superintendent has resigned, retired. You could appoint me your next superintendent right now.
Do you want to count it a pitch?
It would be an act of malpractice, but you could do that. In other words, the only rule here is that the school committee appoints a superintendent in public. There's no requirement that you have a search, there's no requirement that you have a process. You obviously will need to consider the concerns of the community, and only you know what's best in terms of the process and how to go forward. School districts tend to look at their options, and I provided them for you in a decision tree to some of the things you look at. The good news is that this is a good district. It's a nice community. You are free of scandal, you are free of crisis. Everybody has problems, but, you know, I know what problems are in school districts and you don't have. So this is a superintendency that's ready to be handed over in good shape for the next leader to just continue to lead and take the district forward in that direction. It's not a district that needs to be rebuilt, that needs to be blown up and started over. It's in good position. Secondly, you are transitioning under the best of all possible circumstances. A superintendent is retiring after distinguished service and leaving quite honorably. This is a district that would be very desirable for people who wanted to be a superintendent. The bad news is that there aren't a lot of people who want to be superintendents anymore. You understand that not everybody goes well beyond the normal retirement age and continues to work. Many people can't wait to get out at the age of 57 and 58 and find out for themselves how bad daytime television is, but they leave early, and as a result, people leave the profession eight to 10 years sooner than they might otherwise have left. Secondly, as you probably figured out, the regulatory climate in Massachusetts for superintendents, for educators, is about as rancid as it is anywhere in the United States. I meet with my colleagues in the other state school boards associations. Nobody, and not that my job isn't that difficult compared to the superintendent, but nowhere is the educational regulatory climate as bitter, as overzealous, and as punitive as it is in Massachusetts. So why would somebody want to come to Massachusetts and be a superintendent when no matter how good you are, you will technically fail in some way or get sanctioned somehow? Now, Massachusetts people are used to living in a regulation and punishment culture. They understand what it is. We're not daunted by it. But people from out of state are, and they don't want to come here, unless they want to come home to central Massachusetts or to the east, and that often happens. The difference is, when your superintendent began his career in education, if you hired a superintendent from away, he would have come, and the family would have followed with him. Now the superintendent is likely to be a she, as a he, and there is always another adult in the household who's looking for a good job, too. So the process of transitioning is difficult. So districts do one of a number of things. After they assess their situation, they consider an internal promotion if there are people internally who may be aspiring to the superintendency. They might conduct a superintendent's search, which they would manage themselves, or they might retain someone to assist them with their search. I will just tell you that many of the districts that wish to do searches themselves get plenty of free technical assistance from us. One of the criteria that makes an internal search or a search done by the district possible is if there's a cooperating superintendent or someone inside who can assist you in doing some of the technical work for a search that you might manage yourselves. You know, in some districts, they don't want to see the superintendent again, so they're not going to let the superintendent do the process. This might not be the case. The first thing I would suggest to you is think about some of the things that candidates for the superintendency think about. Number one, why is there a vacancy? Well, in this case, it's a good reason that there's a vacancy, and it's an honorable reason, and it's not, it won't discourage you. Number two, what's it like dealing with the board and the community? And this is a highly regarded school board, school committee in Massachusetts, school board everywhere else. So this committee is not going to scare people away, as we find in some other communities. Number three, what is the financing like? What's the budget situation like? You know, budget isn't great anywhere, but in Massachusetts, it's better than most. So financing is probably not going to scare people away. Number four, any other problems that we need to deal with that are exceptional? Probably not. So in that sense, you're in a good position. But the other question that they ask is, is there a credible internal candidate applying for the superintendency? Because the presence of a credible internal candidate will be known immediately and will discourage people from applying. That and the compensation package that you offer will be the predominant factors. Now, when I say they'll know if there's a credible internal candidate, if my, if the superintendent of schools in Terre Haute, Indiana, wants to come back to central Massachusetts because that's where the spouse is from, or that's where the superintendent is from, they will call the State Superintendent's Association or the State School Boards Association, and they'll say, "Call your counterparts in Massachusetts and tell us about Clinton. And by the way, I want to know if there's an internal candidate." And everybody's going to know. So that's a fact. My suggestion to you is that because one out of every three district that turns over does make an internal promotion, if an internal promotion is a viable option for you, think about that seriously before you decide how to proceed with searching for your next superintendent. If you do wish to hold, to put a competitive field before the community, there are processes that you can go through to involve the community, to engage the community. They can include things like talking to the community through focus groups, doing a focus group survey, finding out what the community's priorities are. It can involve casting a wide net. You know, probably 95% of the people who want to be superintendents in the United States go to the websites of the state school boards associations and the superintendents associations to find out where the vacancies are. And there's not a single finalist who's been named for a superintendent search in Massachusetts who hasn't found out about the search by going to our website or the superintendents association. We get 85,000 hits a year, and we only search for superintendents. The superintendents association gets a million hits a year, but they do everything. They post every vacancy that a district might want. So you've got principals, special education directors, assistant superintendents looking there as well. So people will find you, and we're available to assist you if you would like to do your own search, and if you do elect that, you could probably do it for very minimal cost. If you were to do an internal search and vet your internal candidates first, we would be able to assist you with technical assistance that we provide to the membership at no fee. So you want to think about how you'd like to proceed. I would suggest that you get an early start, because the good people get picked off early. And by the time you get to the end of the year, it's like the old Hills Brothers coffee bean commercial. "I got the best beans for Hills Brothers, and the rest I sold off to somebody else." Hate to use that analogy. And the this, the other thing that, I should have mentioned this, but the superintendent candidate pool can be rather timid, because in Massachusetts, there's a significant public exposure during the process. If you have a search committee, that search committee can meet an executive session, can screen candidates privately, and can interview candidates privately. And you may not have a majority of the school committee sitting on a search committee. And the search committee screens the candidates, interviews them, and moves finalists to the public process of the school committee when everything becomes public and everybody who's been looking for you for 30 years now knows where to look. There is a problem with the fact that we have Google, we have Facebook, we have everything. So I don't know whether any of you are educators, but if any of you have ever been administrators and you've ever had to fire somebody, or if you've been a principal and you've ever had to suspend a student, you've got parents or teachers out there who don't like you and want to make sure that your next potential employer knows that Satan brought you to whatever job you had before you came. So it is, now, you know, I mean, think about it, you've been a superintendent, you've suspended people, you've expelled people, you've counseled people out of the profession. I suspect they're not very happy about those decisions, but they're decisions that have to be made. Now they can Google you, and when they find out that you're a candidate in Clinton, they can get on the phone, call the school committee and say, "Do you know how much this person hates children, or how rude to parents this person?" Whatever, whatever difficult things can be. So stalking of candidates is a real problem. And if I can quote some other great literature and take it out of context, it's no great shame to be the finalist, to be the superintendent in Clinton and not get the job, but it's no great honor either. So candidates are, you know, no one wants to be known as the person who didn't get Clinton. So speaking in those terms, people will be worried if, "I don't want to apply for a job if it's going to be wired, I don't want to apply for a job if I'm not going to be looked upon favorably because I'm from out of state, or I might not have a particular background." So those are just the general issues at hand. The other thing I would say to you is that I would hope you have a Plan B. And Plan B could be if you don't find somebody that you like, then you might need to revert to Plan B. And Plan B could be deferred retirement, retaining a retired superintendent to come in and be your interim superintendent, whatever it might be, unless your former superintendent has already been recruited to be an interim superintendent somewhere else, which is going to happen. I'd be happy to take any questions that you have. We did prepare this document to try to address some of those questions. And if you do elect to think about doing the search with the resources and personnel that you have in the district, we can assist you in doing that.
Chairman, I have a question.
Yeah.
You mentioned you'll do to a search committee. Can be as small as two members of the school committee, the search committee?
You may have-
Probably not favorable.
You may have a submajority of the school committee serving on a search committee. Now, if you're thinking, if you're asking about whether two people can form the search committee because it's not a majority of the school committee, there are districts that have done that. They have not been brought to the attention of the Attorney General who enforces the open meeting law. That's risky.
That's what I asked, totally risky.
But it could happen. If you do have a search committee, though, it is very important, in my judgment, to have members of the school committee on the search committee. And that is because the faculty will attempt to take control of the superintendent's search process. I say that not because I know anything about Clinton, but because they always do. And that includes attempting to get the majority of membership on search committees, and oftentimes doing what's best for them, as opposed to what you may think is best for the district. I hope I'm not offending anyone in Clinton, but that's just a real issue. I've actually served or worked with a couple of dozen search committees where members of the faculty have said during the search process, "I've looked at these applicants, and candidates eight and 10 are not acceptable to us." Bullying the rest of the parents and the committee who will say, "Oh, my goodness, not acceptable to the principal or the teachers." What's that about? Well, it's because we encourage you to keep insecure administrators and angry teachers off the search committee. Because we do what's best for them.
Is it typical that when you go through this process and school districts or MAS-C working with school districts develop the constituencies that serve on these search committees? Is there, how does it typically work? Is it a lottery? Is it, does that choice rest with the school committee members?
It's done, first of all, the search committee is appointed by whatever process the school committee uses to designate a committee. So in some communities, the chair appoints the search committee, the chair appoints the chair of the search committee, and the process moves forward. In others, the school committee appoints the search committee from people who have expressed an interest in serving. Sometimes it's a lottery by- Sometimes it's a lottery, discourage a lottery because you can end up with some difficult people that you may not, that may not be effective parts of the group. So I would suggest that maybe the school committee, if they were going to have a search committee, figure out a way, even if it's an internal search committee or a preliminary search committee, whatever it might be, a couple of members of the school committee should, should serve and you should just figure out who you want to appoint. There are some recommendations about what a search committee should look like. It should certainly, the smaller the committee, the better, because those are a lot of schedules to reconcile. You know, one search committee that we worked with recently, we ended up with 19 people on the search committee because everybody had to be accommodated. And what happens is you get the organizational meeting and suddenly it's, "Well, I can't meet on weekends. I can't meet before seven o'clock because I have to come from wherever I come from. I have a regular meeting every Wednesday night, can't meet Wednesdays." And someone else will say, "I'm going away the week of whatever." So the next thing you know, it takes four weeks to get the interviews done. So a small group is better. It should include or could include representatives of the community, the parent constituencies, two or three members of the faculty, sometimes a civic leader in addition to the school committee's president. Oftentimes, somebody in the police department is serving on a search committee. I don't know if any of you are public safety officers, but they're a great asset on search committees. I've done several searches where the chief of police was at the search committee. They're very good because they can, they can do some reference checking pretty effectively. I'm told, police in general, but apparently middle school parents as well can tell whether somebody's lying to them just by looking at you. Occasionally, a student member will serve on the search committee if they can free the time. We have a huge library of model interviews, model questions, a lot of examples of what promotional information can do. A lot of districts, it used to be saving money to do this, but now it's just a common strategy, will develop a brochure, but they'll do it electronically, put it electronically, distribute it electronically, and save the money for printing and postage. And we have graphic designers who can help you design a brochure as a part of your MASC membership, so you can do that without fee. Or if you like, you can consider people who do this for a fee, and there are plenty of those as well. So-
And so-
I'm a designer.
You are?
I'm a designer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I think I could do it.
You could do it different.
Okay. Anyway.
You, you, thank you for the draft, thank you for everything, but thank you for this draft timeline, that you, you foresee this process, I think if, if we assume that, you know, this would be an example, playing out over the next several months?
Yeah, that, that's just a sample.
No, I understand that, but, but, but in terms of how, how it could, could lay out in terms of the direction that we choose to go with it?
Length of time it takes determines, is determined by how much process you want to have.
Sure.
Electronic focus groups, surveys with maybe a day in the district of talking to people in the district, and putting that together can save a lot of time. Shorten the application process. Getting the search committee together to do this quickly so that you could be done on or around Thanksgiving time before the holidays start slowing the process down. Once you get into the winter, you run into weather issues and other things that can delay the process. Plus, the sooner you get started, the better your choices tend to be.
I assume in probably August, that's up to these folks, that they would kind of decide at maybe one of the two meetings in August, just what the plan is going forward. How do you want to do that? And then taking it from there.
And we're available at the other end of the phone to take whatever questions you might have.
This is helpful, helpful document for sure.
I can very briefly just talk to you about some of the issues around school governance for five or 10 minutes, just touching upon these issues. And I can also come back at your convenience and do something in greater detail.
I have a quick question before I forget you. As to the actual qualifications of what a superintendent should have, what do we find? You hear a lot of things, but I don't want any hearsay. I want to know exactly what is it you can get? What can you get in an interim? If you had to have somebody temporarily, what can you do, what can't you do?
Well, first of all, the law recognizes no distinction between an interim superintendent, temporary superintendent, provisional superintendent, or permanent superintendent. An interim superintendent is just a real, realized superintendent with a short contract. You can, you can retain whomever you like if they, if they possess a Massachusetts superintendent's license or are licensed eligible. And that's a very broad definition in the state-
So that's what, so licensed eligible, what is that? It's a very broad definition. What does that mean?
That will be someone who the state says you have one to three years to complete your full certification.
So you could actually hire somebody up to three years if they were eligible?
You could, generally. Most districts want someone with educational experience. The superintendent has raised this issue. That may include classroom experience, it may include special education experience. We consider people who've worked as special educators with small groups of kids to have met the same criteria that the classroom teachers have been. But there are people who have not been in the classroom, who have non-traditional training, who also aspire to the superintendency. Now, some of them come from the business and operations side of the school department and they've worked their way up and have acquired by osmosis some of those skills. But others have not. And people have pretty strong feelings about whether those non-traditional superintendents are viable candidates for their districts. The faculty tends to respect to a much higher degree those people who have had experience as classroom teachers. God knows, we have enough regulation imposed from the State Department of Education by people who even have never been in a classroom or who couldn't make it in a classroom and end up looking for a common law thing.
So could someone that didn't have the certification but met certain criterias, they could be deemed eligible?
They could be certification eligible and would probably be able to come here with a very clear line of professional development necessary to get a permanent license. Another question that frequently comes up, do you really have to have someone with a doctorate in education? And the answer is no. Some of our best superintendents have master's degrees and a lot of experience. Some of our least successful superintendents have had EDDs, but not a lot behind it. So we would leave that to you, but I would suggest to you, do not limit your pool of candidates by requiring a doctorate. Require an advanced degree, require a specific amount of time in education, but don't, don't exclude people right away because they may not have a doctorate.
Is the common contract length about three years? Is that what we're seeing right now?
Three years is a standard first year for superintendent. And oftentimes, after the first or second year, sometimes the district will renegotiate if they re, for example, with the case of internal, internal candidates, where the school committee may have just a little bit of timidity, they may limit the contract to three years and then after two years, rewrite the contract for another three years if it's going-
Is there a minimum amount for a contract?
No.
So it's not like principal, principal's three, but-
It can be one year or one-
You can have a one-year provisional if it works out the first year you extended.
You can make, you can make the superintendency conditional upon attaining a certain rating on an evaluation? Or conditional upon whatever other things you might-
I have another question, I'm sorry. I think one of our challenges is going to be budget, because we're such a small district. Compared to other districts, that's going to be a challenge, for lack of a better word. How do, how do you suggest or have you have ways that we could screen out those candidates that are just looking for the interview? But in reality, they're probably not going to come in because of their money. How do you let them know this is your wrath? Just daily tell them or?
Pretty easy to figure out, actually. When candidates are engaged in the initial process, that question is almost always asked in a way that the search committee can deduce quite clearly what the intent of the candidate is. And before they move forward, you ask them pretty bluntly, and you're aware of the compensation parameters. If the job is offered to you, will you take it? And number three, is there anything else I need to know, which I'm legally entitled to know? I don't care about your sexual orientation, your marital status, your race, your religion, all that stuff, not relevant to us. But if you've been fired from your last job, or if you were fired from the job before that, this would be the time to tell me. Or if you're really not going to take the job, or if you're being timid here at the last minute, now's the time to save us the trouble before we end up with four finalists, two of whom drop out because they were playing you off against another district. You can, you can figure that out. It's not as big a problem as you might think. Thank you. With that, just really briefly, we have, those of you who are veterans, we do have a new member orientation coming up in North Hampton this Saturday, if anyone would like to attend. We will come and do regional orientations for the school districts in the district, if you want to put a few people together for those new members who come on board. The basic functions of the school committee to hire the superintendent, to create district policy, which is extremely broad. Through policy, you can basically make all the rules for how the district operates. Number three, to set the budget, which is the grandmother of all policies, and to engage in collective bargaining and union negotiations for all of those people eligible for collective The lines between the superintendent's administrative role, because the superintendent is your CEO, you're the legislature for schools, he's the chief executive. He has discreet authority provided by the law. That includes authority for just about all of the significant hiring that's done in the district, all overseeing the evaluations, the personnel administration, and the day-to-day operations of the school department are done through the superintendent or his subordinate administrators under his supervision. The key is that sometimes the lines blur. And when you're looking for a new superintendent, this is where you want to probe, because the most successful superintendents know how to navigate through those blurry lines. It's probably a good bad mixed metaphor, I'm sorry. But they know how to navigate that, that area. In other cases, we have superintendents and school committees that are fighting over who's in charge of planning. And there are some areas where the policy prerogative of the school committee and the administrative authority of the superintendent become blurry. That in itself is a two-hour work.
But there is one.
But there is a work. But there is a work. So, yeah, yeah, yeah. And the, the only thing that complicates that a bit is that despite the authority of the superintendent, the school committee has two principal higher order responsibilities. Number one, you represent the values of the community. You bring them to the table. The standards that the community sets, the values that the community has. You're here representing them, you know them better than anybody in town. That's why they've elected you to be on the school committee. Number two, you have fiduciary responsibilities that have nothing to do with education. And the fiduciary responsibility means that the money isn't spent without the approval of the people's representatives, who must approve the way it is spent, how much it's spent, and where it is to be spent. So your fiduciaries, I think before the meeting started, you signed warrants tonight? That's because every bill paid by the district must be signed off by the school committee. So you can do your due diligence, looking at the bill to make sure it looks legitimate. It's a bit of micromanagement. It's about as micro as it can be, because you're signing off on every bill. And if you don't like what you see, you can ask questions and you expect to get the answers. That's the main difference between the general administrative responsibility of the superintendent and the school committee's fiduciary responsibility to oversee. That's the Reader's Digest version of roles and responsibilities. I know we have a new member just, have you ever been elected to anything new? This is your first.
It's my first.
And one other bit of information that I'm going to give you, you are now legally a public figure. So is the superintendent under Massachusetts judicial decisions. By being a public figure, it means that I, as a citizen, a reporter, can write what they want and say what they want about you within limited bounds, but, but, I shouldn't say limited, with very, very broad parameters.
And they have.
And they have. And they have a right to do that. And the way we explain this to people is by-
Of course, you have a good local press.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
But if I want to write a letter to your newspaper and I want to say that the superintendent is the stupidest human being I've ever met in my life, I have a right to do that because he's a public figure. And if I think that's what he is, I can say that. If I want to say you commit child abuse with the policies that you affirm at the school committee and write that in a letter to the editor, it's rhetoric, it's over the top, but sarcasm is a protected form of political speech. So if you've never been criticized in public before, get used to it. We always talk about the five parts of the First Amendment, the freedom of speech, which brings you here, freedom of the press, which brings you here, freedom of religion, the right to assemble, and the right to petition your government for redress of grievances. Who's the government for education in Clinton? You are. Your constituents have an unrestricted right to come and talk to you. They have an unrestricted right to call you and discharge the contents of their mind at any time. You don't have to listen and you don't have to give them what they want, but they have the right to talk to you. So because you lose control of the words once they leave your mouth, be very careful because they can be difficult conversation. I hope I haven't scared you away.
One quick question. One quick question. Because a lot of times, like, people will ask you questions, because people do. Let's say, usually the superintendent has an open door, so people can go and talk about anything. But let's say they don't like what he, his final say on something. What role do we play? Can you just clarify that for the public?
Okay. First of all, when your constituents call you, you should listen respectfully to any of your constituents. If a constituent calls you with a complaint against another employee of the district, you know, this is America, you can talk to anybody you want. If, if, if someone calls you with a concern, and my concern might be, "My child's teacher is terrible." Well, because you don't have authority to supervise the teacher, your role is to refer me to the person who does, and that's the superintendent. Now, if I come back to you and I say, "Thank you very much. The superintendent treated me respectfully, took my concern under advisement, said he'd look into it, and I understand he did, and we're very pleased with the outcome." Then, when you evaluate the superintendent at the end of the year, you say, "We give at the end of the year, you say, we've given you a good evaluation on the basis of your community relations. But if they come back to you and say, why did you refer me to the superintendent? It's condescending, demeaning, made me feel terrible about myself, told me never to question a teacher, told me I wasn't appropriate to be the parent of that child. Why should I want to deal with somebody like that? Well, if you're dealing with somebody like that, or if someone comes and tells you, you know, they suspended my child from school, and my child honestly thought that was a bottle of mouthwash in his pocket, but it was one of his friends who slipped that bottle of, you know, vodka into his pocket. And that, no good, SOB, whatever, you know, you have the right to form your own judgments. You have the right to talk to the superintendent and say, as a member of the school committee, my opinion is that this should have been handled differently. The school committee would be discouraged from discussing something like that in public, because the student has privacy rights, and you don't want to violate the rights of parents and students to deal with that. But you can have any conversation you want, especially with the superintendent. One other conversation, by the way, that I would advise you to, you probably have a policy for how you access your legal counsel. If you have a concern about whether or not you may be in violation of the ethics law or the open meeting law if you do something, or you want to ask a question about how you may fit into the middle of a particular legal issue in the school district, and you talk to your district legal counsel, that is considered a privileged conversation, protected by attorney-client privilege. So oftentimes, if you are worried about an ethics violation, or worried about an open meeting law issue, or worried that there may be some nefarious activity that you're aware of, and you want to just clear it, use whatever procedure you have to use to talk to your legal counsel. And you can do that in the appropriate setting and get the appropriate advice about how to deal with that. I'm not suggesting that any of you are trying to skirt the law, I'm just suggesting that there are so many times when someone will call you, and you'd be nervous about having a conversation with a constituent for fear you were getting into territory that you shouldn't--
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Absolutely.
So could you give us the bullet points about executive session, and when it's appropriate, when it's not appropriate, and just the overview?
There are certain specific times when you may convene in executive session. They include if you're talking about someone's character and reputation, or physical and mental health, or whether someone may have committed, or whether there's a complaint against another person. Under those circumstances, the people that you're talking about have a right to know it ahead of time, they have the right to be present when you do it, they have the right to speak on their own behalf, and they have the right to be represented. Second, if you're dealing with collective bargaining, if you're discussing a criminal complaint, if you're discussing negotiations over the transfer of real property, if you're meeting with a mediator, or if you're discussing security or trade secrets, building security around the system, you don't necessarily want people to know how the security system works so that they can violate it. In those circumstances, you may meet in executive session. And trade secrets, very rarely does that come up in a school district, but sometimes someone will have some, will have a product, and they're going to tell you how it works, but not in public, because it could be a risk. Or maybe the recipe for the red sauce in the cafeteria is so good that they don't want to give it out. If you do go into executive session, the chair announces the reason, without giving up any confidential information, announces whether you will reconvene in public session, and then takes a roll call vote over whether you should convene in executive session. And then all the votes in executive session have to be taken by a roll call. But the law about executive sessions is very strict, and if you violate that, the Attorney General will investigate and cite you. They're very strict about interpreting the opening and the executive session.
Steve, we can have a question if I may. So the minutes of executive session, at some point, those can become public records.
They need to be released as soon as they no longer need to be confidential, and they should be released as quickly as possible. Sometimes, you may find that you have to permanently redact certain elements of information from an executive session. For example, if a minor may have suffered abuse or harm at the hands of the faculty member, and in executive session, that matter is discussed, because of the potential of the lawsuit likelihood it might be, the name of that minor child would be perpetually redacted. The candidates for superintendency who come from a search committee, who are never moved forward to public, would be permanently redacted. Now, if those candidates, or if that minor child foolishly elects to make themselves public, then the standard is different, which is why the chair has special responsibilities to protect people from themselves when they come before the school committee. If someone shows up with a child and wants to advocate for special education, for example, and begins to discuss their child's pathology in front of everybody on the cable television, you have to stop that conversation, because the child's privacy won't be given. Occasionally, you know, a coach or somebody will say, here's, you know, Fran Jones, and Fran Jones was a juvenile delinquent until Fran found me, and I, so if you, you know, if you don't let us have 11 assistant football coaches, Fran is going to go back to the juvenile detention center or something. Only, you know, football will save Fran. You have to stop that. That's a real case, by the way.
But it's something, there was a crime committed that brought to our attention. We are allowed to know those names?
If a crime--
In executive session.
First of all, if you suspect a crime has been committed, you may discuss that in executive session for the purpose of preventing the identity of the culprit from becoming public. Or protecting the identity of the innocent until the appropriate referral to the criminal justice system can be made. If you're aware that a crime has been committed, and that comes out of an executive session that you suspected it might, there's an obligation of the authorities to immediately report that to the appropriate people. Then, of course, if it becomes, if it goes to court, there's an indictment, and there are adults involved--
So let me ask specifically a question. Let's say, special education, for example. A lot of times, let's say we're going to sue by a parent, and we're going to executive session to discuss that. So we are simple, we could potentially find out what that child's name is.
You might know the name of that child, but that's why it's in executive session, because the identity of the child--
So it's okay for us to go in executive session to protect--
Correct. In fact, the contract to provide an out-of-district placement to a particular institution can be redacted to the point where you take the names of the students out, in order to protect those people. Even the contracts themselves, under certain circumstances, can be withheld and remain confidential, if it would result in the disclosure of whose students, either by inference So call us anytime if you have a question, and if you need some help proceeding, we'll be happy to talk to you again in your convenience.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Always good information, as always.
Yes.
Thanks.
Well, Ed DeVoe was not able to be with us this evening, because I guess they had a problem with their vacation plans got switched. He would have been here this evening, so I'm not sure there's any marketing subcommittee report--
Should we table that? We had a meeting.
We did.
Do I table it till the next--
I think it's probably more appropriate--
Yeah, absolutely. Why don't we do so? We'll come back to that on the eighth. I just want to point out, I got an email, I don't know if we all got an email, from Mr. Hastings, there was some really good news about the English MCAS. It's always nice to have good news, and I thought it was very, very good news, so I thought he could-- I guess, take the credit. He was in every classroom.
Sorry for being dressed appropriately for TV outside. Well, I guess it's part of that, you know, the glass half-full or half-empty, I think, of the, I didn't, I'm not sure, I wasn't sure of the exact numbers incoming here this evening as far as totals, but I'm going to guess somewhere around 110, 150, 120 sophomores who took the ELAM CAS. That's the only response I've got so far, the only feedback I've gotten. One of the students has already left us. Two, we have been perfect in the sense of no failures in the last two years, and that's where the glass is half-empty, I think. We've had, unfortunately, two this time. We've had services, but I think that will continue to help them. I think they'll rebound with the comeback test, and it's not important who they are or what they are, or what group or what had, they're two students, that's basically what it is. The upside is, other than two or three needs improvement, every single sophomore had at least advanced or proficient. So that's very positive. That's very, very positive. I think we had maybe three needs improvement, and even those three were probably a question away from proficient, but everybody else, everybody else was advanced and proficient, so we're very happy with that. We don't have the math yet, but that was the only feedback we've had so far.
That was a really nice email, and I always, I want to make sure I remember to ask you to come up and shine the light on that, because it is, it is very nice.
And I just, unofficially, we did get a draft of the NEAS and C final report. We looked through it, the chairs, myself, Mr. Ngano, and a couple of the, and made some suggested corrections or advised on their perception of what the final report and the chair of the visiting team agreed 100% on all the suggestions we made, and it looks, I think it looks good. I think, you know, we won't know, though, now, until October, because we missed, well, we didn't, they missed the January NEAS and C committee meeting, so, by their writing it up, so, but it sounds very good. I don't want to be back here in October defending myself, but I think it looks really good.
Congratulations on everyone's hard work to get to this point. Do you foresee, or will you let us know if there are things that, in terms of changes, that are going to end up being budget impacts?
From the NEAS and C?
Yeah, just in terms of, if there's some big-picture things we need to consider, we'd just like to consider them sooner rather than later as we go into the budget season.
I think, and I don't mean this, I'm not, obviously, I'm speaking for the superintendent, but I know one thing that we're going to be hearing about is, and it's not just this, it's the whole system of financing and budgeting, and, you know, how we've had to go the last couple of years, Tom, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I think, I think we're going to hear about that. But to answer your question, Joel, specifically, I don't know how that works, that would be their feedback.
Yeah. Yeah, so when it becomes more final, Mr. Ngano will share that with us, and then we'll take it under consideration.
The NEAS standard is something like adequate and dependable funding. And we tear that apart all the time. Is it adequate? It probably is adequate. It is. Dependable, it certainly is not. You have to fight like hell to get funding for what you need. So, you know, I'm sure they'll work on that, but the trouble is, they do something like a recommendation that'll say, you know, secure adequate funding for something, and that's a lot tougher than, you know, than just those mere words.
I mean, we really have no idea what their feedback will be. Only, it was just, my own sense was, in speaking with her, that it sounds good, it looks good, but obviously, like, even she said, she presents it to the committee, meaning the chair, Kathy Montagno, the chair of the committee. And then, you know, you've been through it.
Yeah, no, I understand, and so--
But it sounds good, everything sounds good.
Yeah. It's not a question of, you know, they're suggesting you need to add a department, or you need to add personnel. Those are the kinds of things that we need to--
Exactly. I see what you're saying.
For budget drivers.
Right, so, like, with the NEAS, you always have the subcommittees, and they're broken down, usually they consume a lot of time of your staff. For this report that's going to be coming out, do you plan on having an action committee to help to address some of those items that we have to address?
Yeah, we have, actually, what we'll set up is probably a two-year, two-year feedback. So that's probably what, if there are suggestions, if there are, you know, recommendations or changes, that would be within, I think, within the two-year response to that, so, there is a little--
Like a follow-up committee?
Right, exactly, yeah.
NEAS follow-up.
Yeah. But to get back to the original, it was, you know, the ELA success was, I think that was something really, you know, have everybody that high up is pretty--
Good news.
Yeah.
So shared commitment from the elementary to the middle school to the--
It is, it's a potential, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. I don't really have any, no, in light of your, when you talk about budget busters, and I know I brought this up a couple of years ago, and we've been the beneficiary of having a business manager, and which has been great, but I'm going to throw this out for future discussion, that we consider integrating at least a part-time curriculum coordinator in this district, who I would assume would maybe be able to write grants, and probably getting that person on earlier would lessen how many things you have to bring the other person up to speed on. And I do think that, I understand not being able to afford maybe a full-time, but I do think even a part-time curriculum coordinator would help the new person, whoever that may be, move forward. You know, you juggle a lot of balls, you've been used to doing that, and we've been doing that, and you've done it successfully, but I do think, going forward, and as that budget starts to think, and I don't know if that would be in the NEAS recommendations, but I think we've done without for a long time, and--
I certainly think you guys have to start thinking about that. I mean, you're going to have to do something with the pay, probably, anyway. But I think if it could stay maybe roughly the same, and again, that's not my problem, but--
If they don't have to wear two hats.
Yeah, yes. Maybe it could stay the same if they had a helper of some sort.
Right. And I, you know, I think, I'm guessing a part-time position would be probably, in terms of budget and not making a distortion there, that would probably be the best way to develop. We talked about it briefly, and I really'd like to get it in front of everybody, so they think about it, and I think we'd like to move that forward as that budgetary consideration goes on and starts formulating, because that'll help. And you're right, I think it'll help the next person, by the way, you're going to be superintendent and, and, and--
Yes.
We'll take some of those ampersands out of the equation.
They're talking about a hire, not a consultant, correct?
Oh, a hire. I'd say, but I'd say probably not a full-time. I think we really need to, you know, get somebody in there, at least part-time, work with our, you know, we have the department chairs, they've worked out well, you know, that's become well-integrated. I think the fact that each school is talking to the other schools, that process has gotten much better. I think there's a lot of things that have come together here--
Yes.
--under your leadership that I think we can only enhance if we have a curriculum coordinator that sits on top of that and works that through as well.
You really need someone to do curriculum and PD and grant writing. And that was my old job, and we really couldn't afford to keep it after a while, but it's probably time. And the lack of one would possibly scare away some superintendent candidates that we don't want to scare away.
Right. And let them concentrate on the educational mission of the district, which is what they should be doing, and budgetary issues, which, you know, I see you here on weekends, I know there's enough stuff that they have to keep themselves, that will keep them busy without making it more.
Well, I think with, you know, us getting this head start, as far as looking for superintendent to come in, we're going to have to look at their skill set of who we end up choosing, and potentially have to offset where they might have strengths that, you know, the superintendent doesn't have now, or vice versa. So I think if we hire early enough, we'll have to assess their skill set, and then potentially have to offset, you know, offset with hires to address their needs.
Right. I guess I would just add to that, too. That's where it's important for us to have that conversation with the community, with the teachers, with the teachers' association about values and what it is that we want in the next leader. And then, the pool meets that level of criteria that we've established, or it doesn't, and then we make those choices that Mike's suggesting, that, because we can, we can, we can always support whatever skills are not there, because it's a huge job.
Right.
But, but I think it's important-- But I think it's important to have that conversation first about what it is that we all want.
Absolutely. So I think everybody should do their homework and read through the things that Mr. Boucher brought us, because we'll start that conversation, I would say, at the next meeting, and, you know, bring your ideas, and this is a great starting place for that. Is there any old business?
No, August 8th is the next meeting, and I believe just when Kathy Thagy will be here, the person we hired to replace her, anyone can replace Kathy, and will come and talk about where we are with technology, how things are going, and the transition itself and things like that. So right now, that's tentatively scheduled for August 8th. If not, it'll be the 22nd, but I think it's going to be the next.
Okay. That'd be great. Anybody have anything else?
I won't be here August 8th, so I don't, if we have, you know, it's important that we have at least four of us here, I think, given the discussion, the topic, but I'm in Los Angeles on the eighth. So I just...
We could shift the date. I'd like everybody to be here.
As long as we can just confirm that we have, that, you know, as long as no one else is not going to be here, I don't want us to not have a qualm.
But I do think everybody, it's important, because it is such an important, I think we start with everybody here. I'd rather have you here than the 22nd, I don't think it's going to, we're not going to lose something by missing that.
We could dedicate the 22nd to kind of have that conversation, and by that time, it'll be brought up to speed on it and...
Right. I think that would be...
Can we have another meeting in August? I just, it seems like a long time to go from the 11th to the 22nd. We're a week away from school starting.
Yeah. I'm sorry. No, I was thinking we'd have the August 8th meeting, we just wouldn't, we just wouldn't discuss the formulation with superintendent.
I'm not taking the accent.
Okay, right. We can discuss it, but we won't, you know, we'll leave it open for more discussion when you come back.
But the 22nd, you can still be discussing. You do have time now.
Yes.
That's the point.
That was my point. I agree, it would be too long, but I just want to make sure everybody's here to have a quick...
Sure.
I have, anything on the new business? Anybody have? Public comment? There's always something. I'm just teasing. Do you want to come up, Kelly?
Will there be an update on the budget? I saw online that Worcester lost some funding.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Come up, I can't hear you. We got this white noise generator behind us, which...
Same problem here, but...
That's by design.
I was just wondering if we were going to get an update on our budget, because I heard through the grapevine that Worcester lost some funding through some grants, and so I was just wondering if any of that affects us.
Mr. Rulo was just nice enough to give me the newspaper from Pittsburgh that says the K grant, full-day K grant is gone from the budget, which I had not heard. I knew it was in danger, it was in danger a year ago. I think that's, thank you, that's $87,000, but I just got that word an hour ago, so we've got to think about that. It pays about half the salary of each of the eight instructional associates in kindergarten, so that's going to be a problem. We just got word really late last week about the other two major grants. Title I is down $51,000, which, believe it or not, is better than I thought it would be. That's our largest grant, last year was $442,000. So $51,000, we could have a problem. However, we have a Title I teacher who just retired, so we were probably going to replace them with someone, there would be a lot less money, so we might be able to kind of survive that one. And then Title II-A, teacher quality, is only down about $3,000, so I know we can live with that. I haven't heard about Title III yet, but that's coming up in a week or two.
Which one's Title III?
Title III is LEP for ELL students. It's a very small grant, $25,000, roughly something like that. So I'm a little worried about Title I, but yes, we need to talk about that, certainly.
And then how about circuit breaker?
Circuit breaker, we did pretty well on. I'm not sure what was the figures.
We did get extraordinary results, so when I did the next version update, I gave total what we had, so we did have more than we expected.
We did better than we thought, I think, on that, so that should help us.
So with this new information, we go back in the group?
Yes.
Are we, is there any positions that we look in the higher that maybe should be hiring?
Well, any, mostly the new positions were cut anyway with the budget, so we now have to look and see, you know, what we have. Every one of the positions of retirees needed to be replaced anyway, so we'll certainly have to do that no matter what. But I think, I think the major one is going to be the kindergarten grant. We have to have assistance in those classrooms, and I don't know how we're going to handle that, that should be interesting, but we've got to think about that, and probably at the next meeting I can report how we're going to handle that one. Usually we get an official letter, we don't read it in the paper first, but I haven't gotten that letter from the state yet, so...
Must they approve it, or is that proposed?
That's approved. It wasn't in the budget apparently at all. It's not in the state budget, the kindergarten grant, so I don't consider it. When I started, it was $116,000 we used to get, and now it's down to, I think, 82, maybe 87, but it represents eight people.
So I guess what I was trying to say, always we need kindergarten, we voted to have a full-time kindergarten...
Yes.
Because we needed it.
Yep.
So I guess I'm suggesting that before we even look to consider the cutting there, we look at other things we can cut.
Yes, yeah.
Whether it's part-time positions that we have, or stuff like that.
Yeah, the bottom line is people come first, they have to, so we might, but we're very late in announcing that.
Right.
And so there will be kindergarten. Will there be aides, or will it be maybe have to go to part-time aides? That's what we have to, that's what we have to look at now.
So there's no other public comments? That was it?
I just want to mention it's another second meeting here, the August 8th meeting, but the Clinton PBIS back-to-school requirement will be held Tuesday, August 23rd, for all families attending the school. So it's for parents and students, and for all group families that will be attending our sex classes that fall.
And you're, I'm assuming you'll do a connect ed and...
I will definitely do a connect ed.
Yeah, yeah, okay. August 23rd.
Will be baptized on the sex sites. Any other questions?
Thank you. If there's nothing else, I'll call for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.